Tiffany, thank you. A roll call vote, please. Tracy.
Alderman Goriga.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Nissan.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Farr.
Hi.
Chombley.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Thank you, Tracy. Next resolution, please, Shaheen. This is accepting the $20,000 grant from the, uh, from DEC to conduct the tree inventory and help prepare a forest management plan. This allows us to enter into a contract with the group that's conducting the work. Can I have an introduction, please?
Duan.
Thank you, Duan. Can I have a second, please?
Shersha.
Thank you, Shersha. A roll call vote, please, Tracy.
Alderman Goriga.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Nissan.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Farr.
Hi.
Chombley.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Thank you, Tracy. The next resolution is a transfer of funds from, that the city treasurer is transferring from the hospitalization account to various other, uh, treasurer accounts. Can I have an introduction, please?
Duan.
Thank you, Duan. A second, please.
Rebecca.
Thank you, Rebecca. A roll call vote, please, Tracy.
Alderman Goriga.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Nissan.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Farr.
Hi.
Chombley.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Uh, thank you, Tracy. Next and final resolution is, uh, transfers of funds within the DPW cemetery water and sewer accounts. Uh, can I have an introduction, please?
Ryan.
And a second, please.
Duan.
Thank you. Uh, Tracy, roll call vote, please.
Alderman Goriga.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Nissan.
Shersha? We can't hear you.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Farr.
Hi.
Chombley.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Thank you. Um, Shaheen, can you put up the bills, please? A couple of new ones you might be wondering about, network adjusters. That's that deductible we had to pay for the, um, insurance settlement. Uh, Hyman Hayes Associates, those are ADA, um, consultants. And LBS Ecological down there for $10,000. That's why we did this later because that's, um, the group that's doing the tree study. So that's money that we actually will, uh, get back. Any other questions about the bills?
What is the half moon terrace? What is that about?
I'm sorry, say that again?
The way at this Ferry Street Bridge, the half moon terrace.
It must have something to do with the Ferry Street Bridge, um, process. I think, uh, let's see, half moon terrace, Hudson Terrace Apartments. I think they had to get some kind of, uh, agreement from the terraces, but-
Yeah, it's, it's, it's part of the parking lot, the last, right before Ferry Street Bridge, there's easement, um, that I believe, um, they paid like $400 for some shit. Um, and like, it's just to prepare for the start of construction.
Thank you, Mayor.
They, they paid or we paid them?
We pay them.
And same thing for the half moon? Is that for the curved corners?
It's not half, it's half moon terrace is the Hudson Terrace Apartments.
Yeah, I'm asking, is that for the curb corners?
What do you mean?
The curb corners construction that's going on? No, 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 no. This is for Ferry Street Bridge. It's for the bridge that has been down over the past years.
The corner is for DRI, I think.
So we're gonna be using some of their property? Well, basically for that, it's gonna be, um, kinda offline for construction. Okay. Um, so the terrace apartments have all, they've been notified in a part of this process. So they, they knew that, you know, this has been common. And the, and the, and the office of parks and recs, where is that at? For 3500? Underneath the bridge, underneath the terrace.
I believe all these monies come out of the, the fund for the Ferry Street Bridge. First of all, they're separate from... I assume it has something to do with, uh, the review they have to. I'm not sure.
Tracy, you know? Does this clerk know?
Tracy?
Oh, I'm sorry. Um, it is the easement for the access and staging purposes of the Ferry Street Bridge project.
Okay, thank you, Tracy.
Thank you.
Okay, can I have an introduction, please?
Duan.
Thank you, Duan. A second?
Shersha.
Thank you, Shersha. A roll call vote, please, Tracy.
Alderman Goriga.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Nissan.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Farr.
Hi.
Chombley.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Carrie.
Okay, uh, the first local law that we're gonna be able to vote on tonight establishes a 25 mile per hour speed limit on certain city streets. Uh, I believe we'll have an introduction by Dominic. Is that true, Dominic? Would you like to do that?
Thank you, Tom. Yes, I will introduce. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And a second, please.
Duan.
Okay, a roll call vote, please, Tracy.
Alderman Goriga.
I'm sorry, I was just looking at, is, is, is it more than just those two areas?
Not for now, it's just those two streets.
Okay, hi.
Maranti.
I wanna thank the council and, uh, their support in this initiative. I know it's a long time coming. Hopefully this will start, um, the template of other, uh, areas in need. And I also wanted to, you know, at this time, thank Jeff Baker for, you know, working with this, on this, but I, thank you.
Nissan.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Farr.
Hi.
Chombley.
Uh, I just wanna thank, uh, Dominic for his unrelenting, uh, support and, uh, 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 push for this thing. Um, when it wasn't popular, he was behind it. As it gained, uh, recognition, he deserves all the credit. So I'm happy to vote aye.
Walker.
Hi.
Wallace.
Aye, and also thanks and congratulations to Dominic on this one as well, because I think it's gonna give a good model for us to build from. Thank you.
Wolf.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi. The next local law uh, is going to allow eating and drinking establishments, given a certain amount of, uh, history in the buildings, to, uh, exist in the R4 zoning district. Can I have a motion to lay the local, uh, to lay the proposed law on our desks?
Duan.
Duan. And a second by Tiffany?
Yeah.
Thank you, Tiffany. Um, now, uh, we're gonna commence the process to amend that code. So I'll need a roll call vote.
Alderman Goriga.
Hi.
Maranti.
Hi.
Nissan.
Hi.
Rosenthal.
Hi.
Farr.
Hi.
Chombley.
Hi.
Walker.
Hi.
Wallace.
Hi.
Wolf.
Hi.
Presidente Pedro.
Hi.
Can I ask a quick question? Because I got to see the bottom of this, uh, what we're voting on.
Shaheen, can you, yeah.
Okay, just making sure it's not hotels. Thank you.
Okay, before we go into new business, I wanna remind everybody, if you, uh, introduced or seconded, um, resolutions and laws, you need to go in and stop in the City Hall and sign tomorrow morning, please.
One quick question. Can, can Jeffrey Baker define letter D, service establishment furnishing services, other than a personal nature, including convenience stores? What is that?
Um, Tiffany, I'll have to double check. I think that's, that's language that is used throughout the code. That's, that's just the common language. And I don't remember if all of those terms are defined. I don't think they are.
Okay.
But that's the standard language that we've used for, you know, basically those category of uses.
Thank you. Um, before we get onto new business, I'd like to remind council members as well as the public, we are still in the, in the process of determining our budget. And we fought hard to make this an open process. So I really like, I know it's not a convenient time of the day for a lot of people, but, um, these are where a lot of important, these meetings are where a lot of important decisions are made. So I just wanna remind you that they exist and that, uh, you are welcome to attend. And, uh, that's it. Um, having said that, uh, I open it to the council for new business. Any hands? Please raise your hand if you have new business. Council members first. Malachi.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Tom. Um, I just wanted to, uh, touch base. Um, I know that the parking in the city, this has been, come of very, I wanna use the word disturbance scene, um, just a real problem. Uh, the concern is that, uh, taxpayers, uh, of Hudson are just no longer able to park on the street, um, you know, temporary residents, like, from Airbnbs or visitors, um, uh, basically taking, taking up, uh, space, um, especially overnight. Um, and in, in some instances, I'm hearing also that the owners are, you know, even often leaving their vehicles in certain spots, uh, over the weekend. Um, and, uh, residents are being forced to, you know, walk blocks to find parking, which is, again, disturbing. Um, you know, and I'm aware that, um, resident, uh, residential parking permits, um, uh, maybe begin being discussed, uh, in the meantime, um, you know, I just want, I wanna, uh, maybe try to put together proposal to revisit this parking, the parking line discussion, um, that I believe would surely make another huge difference in the impact, uh, you know, on the way people park and to make more room, cuz, uh, the lines are visible and, uh, and they create, uh, parking landmarks, so to speak. Um, you know, and I know it'll take some time to, to pinpoint, uh, what streets may need the parking lines, uh, throughout the city, uh, but I know, you know, I, I definitely know we can start with a, a few in a fourth ward locations, uh, where I know for a fact that's been a huge problem, especially, you know, we got winter time coming up, um, and that's when, that's when the, the boxing matches start. And like I said before, you know, I had to mediate a few actual fish fights and, um, you know, and I, I just don't wanna to revisit that again because, uh, you know, I don't want anybody losing a life over a parking spot. But people are frustrated and they desperate and, I don't know, I'm just looking to get, you know, they looking to get, well, you know, what, what they can, um, out of it. So I'm, I'm just really trying to see, you know, maybe from the DPW or the Chief, Chief Moore to see, you know, within a proposal, what would a proposal look like, um, with that? And hoping it could be done as soon as possible. And, you know, I, I just don't feel that, you know, some lines put on the street could, would take a, a long time to do.
Um, thank you. Malachi, I think I mentioned you today when we were talking about this, that, um, I asked Jeff partly, uh, to help us begin the process. I believe you just said we have to appeal to DeeDee Barrett to get a resident registration program going? Is that correct, Jeff?
Yeah, you're gonna need a local law, that, you know, a, um, home rule message and a law, um, from the legislature that authorizes you to do that, to put in a parking permit.
So we, we just contact her?
Talk to DeeDee Barrett and say, yeah, you'd like to get, the same way we started the process for the speed limit.
Okay. So there's part of an answer, Malachi. The other is, of course, to approach, uh, do you know, you don't know anything about drawing lines for parking spaces, do you, Jeff? I mean, in terms of the, I mean, we do it on Warren Street, it should be able to, be able to do it, right?
Yeah, no, the authority is, I think, um, through the police and DPW.
Right.
It's the delineation of the spaces in terms of, um,
Okay.
primarily DPW.
Right.
Some areas have lines, but, you know, they've, uh, you know, they definitely just need redone.
Okay, I will, uh, talk to Rob about it with you, Malachi. Let's see what you can do. Next, you're welcome. Dominic, your hand is up next.
Thanks, Tom.
You muted yourself. You hit the wrong button, Dominic. You muted yourself.
Malachi, you know where DeeDee's office is?
Uh, yeah, I'm not sure, Tim.
Yeah, well, I'll, I'll work on that, Malachi. Dominic's up right now.
Am I there?
Yeah.
You got, okay, thank you. Well, I just wanna reiterate, Tom, cuz, uh, I think you make a valid point. I mean, sometimes what I find is more convenient is using your, the link for, with, uh, the radio station, you know, cuz I can listen while I'm working rather than, you know, the Zoom. So, you know, I think having people having that access and using, using, using that method, um, could be also very helpful and just get it out there a little bit more that it's available.
Oh, you mean for the BEA?
Yes, for the BEA, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Uh, Tiffany, you're up next.
Well, um, just to let, uh, Alderman Malachi know, DeeDee Barrett shares an office with Congressman Delgado on Fourth and Warren Street, um, and, and it's the red brick building. Um, anyway, I would like to invite the public as well as the councils, uh, this Thursday to community listening sessions, the history and future of housing in Hudson and Catskill. This will take place as an online event from six to eight, uh, with our own Claire Cousin, uh, Deswan Smith and Sarah Black. Uh, you can register your Zoom link at email programs@hudsonarealibrary.org. Uh, so please come, join us and listen to your community.
Thank you, Tiffany. Rebecca Wolf has her hand up.
Oh, yeah, I'm just back to, um, Malachi's, um, comment. I, I also really think that the city is gonna need to consider residential parking, um, permitting, like, probably for most of the, you know, the, the, but the downtown area or the, the residential streets that are closest to Warren. And, um-
I think, uh, what, when this was brought up last time, what they discovered is, it has to be the entire city. You can't, I mean, it wouldn't impact negatively. Those people don't need it. So, anyway, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, Rebecca.
Well, I guess I'm really just supporting what Malachi said, that, that the city needs to start thinking about it, you know, in a real way, how to, how to protect residents right to park. And, um, and so, uh, a- and also how to encourage, um, visitors to use alternative means of transportation to arrive in the city, which I think, you know, a lot of businesses are gonna wanna do that. So, you know, uh, I guess just, yes, I agree, Malachi, and, um, and I'm happy, you know, uh, I think that the Conservation Advisory Council is something that could really be brought into this question because car, cars are related to conservation. So, um-
Okay, thank you.
You from the public already?
Ryan?
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, I'll just remind the council as well, you all have the startings of the parking study that I completed a few months ago that has the resident survey piece I'm looking for help on in there, um, with everything that's supposed to go in front of Peter Bush now. So if that's something that can help expedite this conversation, I would love if we can get some more resident feedback in that link as well. And, you know, depending on what we decide, if that's something that any minute, any of the members of the media, um, the call tonight would be interested in taking a look at and helping us get out as well, it would be wonderful. So, thank you.
Malachi, you have your hand up again? Yes?
Yeah, yeah. Well, I just wanted to, uh, congratulate Shaheen on, uh, launching his new project that, that should be coming out soon.
Okay. Um, now, let's, uh, open it to the public. Anyone in the public uh, wanna raise their, raise their hand to speak? Oh, the mayor wants to talk. Go ahead, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Tom. Um, yeah, I just wanna let the council, everybody know that again, we'll be dressing up for Halloween from two to four Halloween Day in front of City Hall. Um, so if anyone wants to join us from the council, or you, Tom, uh, you're more than willing.
Uh, what are you dressing as?
Uh, it's a secret.
Okay.
Brian.
Um, Ron Kopnicki would like to speak.
Yes, hi. Uh, I just wanted to call your attention to the fact that the proposed law on R4 zoning still reads south of Third Street.
Oh.
We discussed this last week and it was supposed to be changed to west of Third Street.
Right. Thanks for pointing that, but I-
It was, it was sent in. I don't think we changed the posting on it, but yeah, we had that in there.
Okay, and, and Matt McGee, if possible, would also like to ask a question.
Sure.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't know if I fully understand what is, is going to be available to, to have food and drink and things like that under this new arrangement. For example, would, uh, a bed and breakfast qualify then to apply for this, to become a restaurant or a bar?
Hmm.
I, I think it's, I'm not sure reading it. I, and the things are a little scattered throughout the, the law.
Somehow I doubt that. I think the existing buildings had to have a specific commercial purpose. Jeff?
Very limited to having, uh, purposes that, that for now are, are not just standard. Because I assume that having a bed and breakfast is not a standard use.
That's not necessarily true. There are-
I don't know. I couldn't find, uh, the law that things were spread all over the place.
Uh-
I have to look.
I, I find it, it, it's a little disturbing not to have a full understanding of, you know, what can actually become a, a, a different business. What is the term? What do they call?
Well, I have to look at this. I mean, I don't know specifically how it does. We do define and have uses, I believe, for the bed and breakfasts for the city.
Yeah.
So I don't know if an existing bed and breakfast, unless it was a non-conforming use.
Yeah, so, so it's-
Be able, to be able to add a restaurant to it, but-
I guess the point, the point may be that it's restricted, the limited uses that are listed in this, uh, change are, are the kind, are the uses that it would have had to have had in order to change to those, to go and do those again.
Um, and I know that, that's a good, that's a very good question, cuz of the way the amendment is, and I have to get to the full law to answer that properly.
Certainly the intent-
Now, these are the, these are the uses that are, that are allowed. These are not the, um, what they was before when became non-conforming. These are what, if it's a non-conforming structure and has not been converted into a residential use, these are the uses that it could be used for, subject to planning board approval.
Yeah, so it's not limiting that they had to have been those uses before.
Right.
So it could open it up to any other non-conforming use.
Right, but I don't know what the, I don't have sure the universe is that, is that big down for that, but that's, but you're right. I mean, it's in theory, yeah.
To my mind, we don't know if, if exactly what some businesses are, are, if they're non-conforming or not, like, uh, bed and breakfast, uh, Airbnb, you know, and so it opens them up to switch to one of these other non-conforming uses. And I think that's, would be extremely unfortunate. But I believe on Allen Street alone, between Front and up to the courthouse, there are at least five bed and breakfasts and, and I think there could be even a couple more.
In my own interpretation of it, Mr. Kopnicki, if that's the example we-
Mr. McGee, thank-
Oh, sorry, Mr. McGee. I, I, I question whether or not that would be permitted because a B and B is not something that any member of the street or public can walk up off of just to get a drink. There's the room engagement.
Well, I'm saying that they could change their use, not that they would still be that use and-
No, I understand what you're saying. You're suggesting it could become a bar, but, but thereby, a bar is not the mere function of what the Airbnb would do. So I don't think they can strip away just to become a bar in that aspect. And I would still-
I know, we don't think it, but do we know it?
Right, I'm just trying to finish my response here. Excuse me for a second, but Tom, would it also be, uh, a question that wouldn't it need to go in front of the planning board before any decision on the function of the domicile or use would be made? So-
Correct. That's not a big safeguard to me.
Ready?
Well, I would like to hear back from this, from Mr. Baker and, and have a clarification that, that would nail it as opposed to what people think or feel. Thank you very much. I appreciate-
Thank you, Matt. We'll get you an answer. Thank you, Matt. We'll get you an answer. Any other member of the public? I don't see any hands. Tiffany?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, Dewan beat you to it. Do I get a second? Do I have a second?
You got a second, you got a second.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you all. And that's it.
Thank you, everybody.